Good morning, everyone. We'll call the June 6, 2012 meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. We're going to ask Councilmember Harvey Buchanan to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please stand.
Good morning. Let us pray. This morning, our most gracious and humble Father, we come petitioning our throne of grace. First of all, thanking you for another day's journey, thanking you for the gift of life, thanking you for dying on the cross and rising again and declaring all power is in your name and is in your hand. Father, we pray that you forgive us of our many sins that we have transgressed against thee. We pray, Father, that you would bless us, one by one, and collectively bless us with the blessings that we stand in the need of. For, Father, we know that you know about what we need more than we do ourselves. Go with us and stand by us. Father, as the council deliberate this morning on this agenda, we ask that you grant us wisdom, courage, knowledge, and conviction for the betterment of the city of Jackson, Tennessee. And when it's all over with, Father, we'll give you the glory and we'll give you the praise. The honor is already yours. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I think you can show as far as roll call, I'll counsel present. Oh, that's right, show one absent, Councilman Brooks is not here, sorry about that. Item four is approval of the minutes of the May 1st, 2012 city council meeting. I think council members have a copy of those minutes, and if there are no corrections, we'll go ahead and approve those. Also, the minutes of the May 15, 2012, call city council meeting. I think you all have copies of those minutes, and if there are no corrections, we'll let those minutes stand as submitted. Let me indicate to the audience, as we get into the agenda, if anyone here would like to speak on any issue that's on the agenda, please let me know at the time that we arrive at that particular issue, and I'll be happy to call on you and let you come and speak if that item is on the agenda. Counsel, we have a couple of, have one proclamation this morning and one very special recognition. And I'm going to ask initially that Hank Shackelford and anyone that he wants to come down, also our honorees for proclamation, and that is Jeanne Beverley Pierce. Come up to the podium.
It's Stone Cup time again, as most of you know, or I hope most of you know. The Stone Cup is the city-county championship of Jackson-Madison County, and each year, each summer, over two weekends and 108 holes of golf and three golf courses, we try to determine who the champion golfer of Jackson-Madison County is. Last year, Danny Green was our champion, and we're looking to, we can have a great competition again this year. We've made a couple of changes. The first round will be on the 30th of June at Woodland Hills, first time we've been hosted there. And the second round on Sunday morning, on the 1st of July, will be at Jackson National. And on Sunday morning, of course, we do have our Fellowship of Christian Athletes breakfast before we go out and play golf. And then, this year, we're going to have 16 people qualify for match play at the Jackson Country Club the weekend after. So, we've increased the number of people that can participate in match play. And with that, we hope that all of you will come and participate in the tournament. And, Mr. Mayor, I think we have some very, very good honorees this year.
It's an honor for me now to read the proclamation for honorees, and that is Jeanne Beverley Pierce. Beverley is a much better golfer than Jean, has been much better, I can tell you that. And she, during her time in Jackson, was a member of a Recreation and Parks Board for 10 years and helped guide this city through its parks and recreation programs. So, she is a special treat for me to have her here this morning, she and Jean, to be the honorees for this particular event. It's a proclamation, whereas Jeanne Beverley Eller Pierce have been distinguished citizens of Jackson-Madison County, Tennessee, and its golfing community for many years. And whereas Beverley Eller Pierce of Jackson has significantly influenced Tennessee golf, both on and off the course. As a daughter of Harold and Ruth Eller, she, her sister Judy, and her brothers Richard and Mike have long been recognized as the first family of Tennessee golf and were honored as the Jack Nicklaus Golf Family of the Year by the National Golf Foundation in 1993. And whereas, beginning in 1953, she has played in more state women's amateurs than any other competitor. She has won five state women's senior amateur championships, 32 club championships to her credit, seven at the Old Hickory Country Club, and one at Woodland Hills Country Club, and 24 at Jackson Country Club. She served as president of the Women's Tennessee Golf Association, was a board member for over 40 years, and is a member of the Tennessee Golf Hall of Fame. And whereas her husband Jeanne Pierce, as well as being a famed golfer in his own right, is widely recognized as a historian of Tennessee golf. He has authored six golf or sports-related books and has written and edited the Tennessee Golf Almanac and record book since 2006. He was a Tennessee Golf Association Director for over 30 years. While in Jackson, Jeanne managed Pierce's office equipment for 40 years, which was named Small Business of the Year in 1991 by the Jackson Area Chamber of Commerce. Jeanne is a past president of the Jackson Exchange Club and the Jackson Club Carl Perkins Center for prevention of child abuse, and past chairman of the Jackson-Madison County Sports Hall of Fame. And whereas Jeanne and Beverley have lived in the villages of Florida for the past four years, their two sons Barry and Ray are graduates of Old Hickory Academy and are golf professionals. Jeanne and Beverley have been blessed with three grandchildren. And whereas in recognition of their lives and dedication to the furtherance of the great game of golf here in Jackson-Madison County, Tennessee, and as part of the 2012 Stone Cup, the official golf championship for Jackson-Madison County, Tennessee, let it be known that the honorees for 2012 Stone Cup are Jeanne and Beverley Eller Pierce. Now therefore, we Jerry Gess, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby jointly proclaim the 2012 Albert A. Stone Junior Cup as the official golf championship of Jackson-Madison County, Tennessee, this 5th day of June, 2012, and urge all citizens to participate in this annual golf championship and to express appreciation to Jeanne and Beverley Eller Pierce for their contributions to golf and this community as stated herein. Jeanne, Beverley, it's an honor for me to present both our just proclamation and welcome you back to Jackson, Tennessee, and thank you for being the great citizens of our city. We miss you, we invite you to come back and be with us anytime.
This is mighty nice, and we certainly appreciate it. It's really a pleasure to be back here and to see some of our many, many friends that we have here. When we first moved to Florida, I can't remember exactly how it happened, but somebody said, maybe I'd gone to a Florida football game or something, but I just, I said, "You can rest assured, I'm not a gator. I'll always be a Tennessean." And really, it's a pleasure, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We do, we certainly appreciate it, and we sure do love Jackson, Tennessee, and we'll never forget you, I'll tell you that.
Well, that was a, that was a very special presentation. We have one more this morning, and this is a very special time in the life of our city. We have one of our own, spent 10 years on our Jackson Police Force, who have just received a tremendous honor. And I'm going to ask Special Agent in Charge, Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, John Mayer, to come up and bring with him Agent Michael Parsons, who is now an agent and a former member again of the Jackson Police Department, for a very special presentation. And let me ask all of our chair if you would come up and join them, and Police Chief Kendrick and any of the, any of the members of PD, y'all come on up and stand while John reads the citation. John, come up.
Honorable Mayor, City Honorable Counsel, it is my privilege at this time to introduce one of our special agents that works for Tennessee Bureau of Investigation. Prior to coming to TBI, as the mayor said, he served the city of Jackson for 10 years as a police officer. Michael Parsons started out, born and raised in Mississippi, went into the military, left the military after serving honorably, and moved back to Tennessee, or moved to Tennessee with his father and them, Overton Clifton. He began his career in law enforcement in Clifton, served there for a number of years, and moved to Wayne County Sheriff's Department, and then eventually made himself to the city of Jackson. Being in the Reserve, the military during this time, he served here in Jackson. As many of our citizens of this great city and state, he was activated and served several tours in the military in Iraq and Afghanistan. This past Sunday, Master Sergeant Michael W. Parsons was awarded the Medal of the Bronze Star in Memphis at his National Guard, Air Guard Unit. And I'm going to read you that. Technical Sergeant Michael W. Parsons distinguished himself by outstanding achievement as a non-commissioned officer in charge. Quick reaction team, 455th Expanaria Security Forces Squadron, 455 Expanaria Mission Supports Group and Wing, were engaged in a ground combat against the enemy of the United States near Bagram Air Force, Afghanistan, from the 5th of April, 2011, to the 15th of October, 2011. During this period, Sergeant Parsons skillfully led a 45-person team to transform the tactics, techniques, and procedures for Bagram, first continuous manned quick response force. While tactical employment of four maneuvers elements throughout the 220-square kilometer base security zone surrounding Afghanistan, the largest strategic hub, he meticulously orchestrated over 120 outside the wire patrols, which denied insurgents freedom of movement and access to the key terrain. His leadership was pivotal in the response to a downed Army attack helicopter. Sergeant Parsons directed security for the crash site, negated further damage to the $20 million combat asset following an indirect attack. He synchronized planning execution to migrate the point of origin. His team rapidly discovered and secured the scene and enabled sensitive site exploitation. Sergeant Parsons superbly led security over the watch missions in the support of Operation Lone Star and Thunderdome, which resulted in the capture of four Taliban high-value targets and reduced the flow insurgents' weapons into the regions. His Expanaria leadership, personal endeavor, and devotion to duty displayed by Sergeant Parsons in this responsible position reflect great credit upon himself and the United States Air Force. Since this time, when this happened, Sergeant Parsons has actually been promoted to Master Sergeant Michael W. Parsons. And it's a great pleasure of mine to introduce you to Master Sergeant Michael Parsons.
I was just thinking in my mind, when John was reading the citation, that I worked here for 10 years and never had the honor of being on this podium. It took me leaving, going to the state of Tennessee to come back here, I guess. But no, it's an honor. I was humbled to receive this award. I had spoke to somebody outside. This award is more about the men and women that worked for me and with me and their service and sacrifice than it is about my own. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get a little emotional. Just don't forget that we actually have troops in harm's way as we speak today, and that's what it's all about. I appreciate it, Mayor, Councilman. It's an honor to be here. I appreciate your recognizing me. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. And Michael, you certainly bring honor to our city by virtue of your actions, so it's an honor for us to acknowledge that today in front of people here and in the Jackson City Council. So, again, we thank you. Thank you for your service, and thank you for being a part of our city. We have established a city council committee to study that issue, bring it back to council for approval. That committee consists of Councilman Dodd, Councilman Wallace, and Councilman Conker to study that, and will be back on the agenda at some future date. Okay, item seven under first readings is consideration request to revise the zoning restriction placed on 110 East Forest Street by allowing the placement of a monument sign in the natural tree buffer at the corner of Highland and Forest, submitted by Dr. Toby Hampton, Tri-County Medical Medicine and Urgent Care Clinic. Stand.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The item that you have on your agenda was presented to the Planning Commission for Design Review. As you know, in the redevelopment area, any new construction has to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and in looking at this sign, they were unable to approve it because of a zoning restriction that had been placed as a buffer along Highland to be undisturbed when the property was rezoned to its present zoning, which is an office zoning. So, we basically remanded it to you because the zoning restriction was approved by you as a part of the zoning package. Now, Dr. Hampton is asking to adjust that restriction to allow the placement of the sign that I have up on the screen. This is a monument sign, and it is a depiction of the sign that they would like to place. Again, if you approve this lifting of the restriction just for the sign, this would have to go back to the Planning Commission for Design Review, and they would approve for the final form. But we, in looking at this sign, don't really have a problem with it. The main thing, the calls that we've received, is the residents that are in the area that are adjacent to it just don't want the trees to be, you know, the buffer to be eliminated or to be lessened. So, we would ask that in approving this, if you so choose, that you allow the urban forester, who's on my staff, Jody, to work with Dr. Hampton in the tree removal and working with that and approving only those trees that need to be removed for the visibility of the sign and not to affect any of the significant trees that do make up the buffer. And again, this would have to go back to the Planning Commission for Design Review in its final form.
So, is this in the form of ordinance for two readings and public hearing, or is simply a request, is it not?
Yes, it's just a request. What you would do is you would just be allowing the restriction to be lifted just for the placement of this sign. And Dr. Hampton, again, has spoken to you, and he's here, and he could speak further, or is representative, but because of the nature of his business being urgent care, he feels like the additional signage would help direct people that are in emergency situations to the site. And he does have a current sign on Forest, but because of the double frontage aspect of his lot, he would like to have one on Highland.
Okay, we do have, if there's any question, Counsel, we do have the doctor, and also acknowledge the presence of former Senator Roy Heron, who is here in the audience on this matter. Any questions from Counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
In discussion.
Could we amend the motion to read that we approve it on the condition that they work with Jody on that?
Okay, any additional discussion? Counsel, please.
Adam two, is consideration ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance, City of Jackson, Tennessee, Article Five, Specific District Regulation, Section 20, Office District B, uses permitted by adding a medical fitness and rehabilitation center as a permitted use submitted by Dr. Shannon Bone.
This item was presented to Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending the text amendment to you. In this zoning class, as in some of our other zoning classes, the uses that are permitted are very specific. It says these uses are allowed and no others. If it's not specifically listed, then it's not allowed. And from time to time, we have to look at the text and have to adjust it because, you know, the ordinance is kind of a work in progress that has occurred over the years. And at the time it was written, there was uses that are new now that weren't thought about then, and so as we move through time, we look at adjusting them to be more in alignment with the uses that are present today. And this is kind of one that did not fit into a neat little box. The office zone allows medical offices, which Dr. Bone will be conducting his chiropractic office from this location, but it does not allow for the fitness component of his office, which for a lot of the time, this fitness portion of his business will be used for his own rehabilitation for his patients. But because he wanted the aspect of fitness, we felt like it needed to go further to be clarified. Now, again, we have restricted this use in the zoning ordinance. It's not, this is not a Gold's Gym or a 24/7 Fitness. This is tied in with a medical office, allows for a fitness component, but only when it's tied into a medical use, and it's also being used for rehabilitation. So, it's very specific, it's not broad, and someone in a similar situation in a zoning class of this nature would have to fall into the exact category to be approved under this classification. So, we're not opening it up. We have worked very hard to keep our office zones very much office, and this is not an opening up or a lessening of that spirit and intent. It's more just to allow a use that's a little bit different, but not retail in nature. And so, we understand the retail aspects, wanting to keep them in commercial zones and out of our office zones, so we are very sensitive to that. So, we feel like this does not do that, and the Planning Commission feels that way also. And Dr. Bone is here, and I would let him, if you have questions, address your questions at this time.
I do have a question, Stan, and probably you would be the one to address this. I know this is in the very early stages of this process or this project. What would be your take on some type of berm or some type of space between the business and the residential area directly behind that going down Old Humboldt?
Well, the office district allows for a development plan being approved by the Planning Commission prior to development, and also requires that the actual elevations of the business, the building itself, be approved by the Planning Commission. So, buffering requirements are always something that we consider and put in place when property that's zoned commercially adjoins residential. So, that is something that the Planning Commission will review and will address at the time the development plan is approved. And I can assure you that if it abuts residential, buffering is usually a part of that development plan.
But is it correct that it would only be used by his patients, or would he allow memberships of healthy people?
Well, I'll let Dr. Bone address that, because he's the business owner, so he can more adequately address that for you.
But from your standpoint, Stan, what's we allow the zoning? Does the plant department of the city have a limit on whether he allows? I mean, is, will the zoning say it's got to be patients only?
Yeah, well, the restrictions say that it has to be used in this form, and it has to be used in conjunction with his medical office. And the way he's explained his use to us, it's not a full retail fitness center. So, again, I'll let him address that, and we are not seeing it like that. We've expressed, and Dr. Bone can tell you, we've expressed that from the very beginning, that we, that this could not be that type of center, because we felt like it would violate the spirit and intent of the office district. But we felt like having some memberships available to his patients and maybe a small group outside of that, we didn't feel like would be a problem. But again, I'll let him address the capacity and magnitude of that and how much that makes a part of his business plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bone, Dr. Bone, how many memberships you planning on selling?
Well, that's a good question. You know, the intent of the facility was to create, you know, we're looking at about a 15,000-square-foot facility. About 5,000 of that is allocated to just the clinic, and about 10,000 is allocated to a rehab slash gym facility. You know, our focus is to create a unique facility where we can base our care on wellness. So, in that, inside of the rehab facility, we're looking at, instead of a typical gym that's going to have a lot of free weights and those types of things that most people go to do workouts, we're looking at how do we functionally increase a person's health? So, for us, the clinic space is allocated to treating patients, but we do, in physical medicine, we do an extreme amount of rehabilitation. And so, the gym portion of it will give us an opportunity for our patients to move over into that area after they receive treatment, to continue to do rehabilitation. The extended hours, because our clinics only open from 8:00 to 5:30, Monday through Thursday, the extended hours will allow our patients the ability to see the trainers there and continue rehab after hours on a wellness-based facility. For us to be able to look at the entire cost of the facility and to make a good business decision, we have to have some usage outside just that of our patients. I mean, we have about 8,000 members in our clinic, so we feel like that, you know, a great portion of that's going to be used by our patients. But we certainly want the opportunity for others to come visit the clinic. And our idea with that is if people that want to improve their health, lose weight, you know, lower their blood pressure, cholesterol, those types of things, is going to give them an opportunity to come in and do that. They can come in and with a membership, receive a checkup in our clinic, and then if they so choose or have any other health problems, then certainly we can address that for them.
What's your hours?
For the gym?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we haven't really set that completely yet. You know, we've thought about having extended hours up to 10:00 or 11:00 p.m., and we've thought about having 24-hour access. thought about having 24-hour access. You know, our clinic doesn't open until, well, we get there about 7:15 in the morning, start seeing patients at eight. A lot of people who are in, you know, doing rehab or fitness, come in real early in the morning, 4:30, 5:00, 5:30. Some people go later at night, 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night. So we're trying to decide what's the best, you know, best way to address the needs of all of those people.
Dr. Bone, if you could clarify for me, would this be a referral basis for fitness, or this would be an open membership basis?
Well, they will have open membership, yes.
It sounds like a gym to me, that you'd be in competition with Gold's Gym and the rest of them, is what it sounds like to me.
Well, I think the nature of what we're trying to accomplish is somewhat different. I mean, Gold's Gym and Jackson Sport and Fitness are, you know, those facilities are 35,000, 40,000, 50,000 square feet. And, you know, when we take out, we're going to have one room for classes and we're going to be doing functional rehab there, you're looking at maybe 6,000 or 7,000 square feet. More along the lines of a physician's quality care and Boomers kind of facility than it is a Gold's Gym or a Jackson Sport and Fitness that's going to have, you know, all kinds of, you know, track and racquetball and swimming, and we're not going to have all of those things.
Then how large is that size?
The property itself?
Roughly?
I think it's 1.6 acres.
How would you structure the parking in a situation like this? And I mean, you've got your patients, obviously, who are coming, and then if you open, if you open membership, how would you construct your parking plan for an area that size? Because that's not a huge, I mean, that's not a huge lot.
And that's kind of the way we look at it, is the size of the facility and the size of the site doesn't lend itself to a retail use of the property as well as a Gold's Gym-type arrangement. The parking and the building will be more conservative in nature, because a large part of this, you know, this facility will be office and rehab, which has a lower parking standard. We'll review that development plan as a part of the process. And again, we feel like that, given the nature of the site and given the nature of the use, that there's just, you know, there's not a way to really have a retail use of the property. And again, as I explained to some of the council people at pre-agenda, in looking at this site, we have been through this site several times and pressured to, you know, for retail-type use of this property. And as you know, this property is pretty much office uses. We do have one rehabilitation place that's in close proximity in an office complex just south of the funeral home that does similar type use. Not exactly, but, and we've maintained that line and still are maintaining that line. And we feel like this use will, once and for all, utilize the property, and we won't have that pressure and that, you know, that move to try to retail, you know, retail zone this property in the future. But again, the restrictive nature of what Dr. Bone is talking about is the only way that we would approach this. And any retail use of the property would be violating the spirit and intent of what we're putting in place. And again, if you feel like that this use is not restricted enough, you know, there are other things that could be placed in terms of the text amendment. But we feel like it's fairly clear now.
My question is, if we're operating outside of, because it says during normal business clinic hours, if you're looking at 11 o'clock at night or 24 hours for the retail purpose, how disruptive would this be for the residents around the area?
Well, again, with any use, you can't, a use can't be a nuisance. There can't be noise and traffic to the nature that it would become a nuisance for the area. And again, given the utilization of the square footage, the small aspect of square footage is being utilized for this use, access card type fitness places, you're not talking about like a fitness center where you have, you know, a big peak time where people, you know, you have a bunch of people at one time, that usually access card are more at people's convenience, and you have people coming at different times and more sporadic. So we don't feel like, you know, it's going to be a high-traffic generator based on the use. So I don't see that traffic being a nuisance aspect. If traffic became a nuisance aspect of this use, then in our opinion, you're doing something beyond the scope of what's been approved.
That's exactly what's going to happen. He's going to sell as many memberships as he can. He wants as many people as he can get in there. It's going to be a retail. Exactly what he's wanting to do.
Let me add to that, is our target, our plan for open memberships is to target a certain group of people, not just the general public. We're looking at targeting middle-aged and Medicare-type individuals that come in and actually need physical medicine and rehab and use the facility. Our target's not going to be the 18 to 30-year-old that just wants to be there to work out. So, you know, that's, you're saying that, you know, we want to target as many people. I don't think that's entirely our intent to try to get, we're looking at a certain segment of the population to create a unique niche for that type of person to be able to come and get instructional fitness and get rehabilitation.
Here are the current restrictions that are placed as a part of the zoning. Now, again, if you feel like it's not protective enough, we could consider other things. But as you say, it has to be a medical clinic, a fitness rehabilitation center or integrated as a complete wellness center. It can't be a separate functioning fitness center. The primary use of the facility has to be the medical clinic. The fitness center will be used as a functional rehabilitation facility for patients during clinic hours. Again, those are the way that this is restricted. If this is not restricted enough, we can consider other things. But again, we feel like it's describing a use that is not retail in nature. Again, if he becomes retail in nature, then he violates this provision, and we would have to address that.
I don't have issue with what he's wanting to do. What I have issue with is the disruption with later hours. I was hoping he would come in and say, no, we plan to 8:00 or 9:00, you know.
Or 6:00.
But, you know, for it to be 11:00 or possibly 24/7, I'm a little concerned as far as disruptions.
Well, again, the council can, as a part of a text amendment, restrict operating hours. Again, I don't, as to working for Dr. Bone, he would have to decide whether that works for him. But again, you have to decide how much you want to allow this type of facility within the office zone. Again, we're not recommending that you violate the spirit and intent of the office district. We're not recommending that you allow a retail use in the office district. We don't want to see that happen. If you feel like there's additional things needed, or you feel like this use doesn't fit in its present form, as Dr. Bone has presented, then you have to make that decision. We're not asking you to do anything that's going to create a problem, don't want to.
Question, you're saying that your fitness center is going to be a lot more similar to Boomers than it would be to Gold's Gym or something? Are you going to have the same type of equipment in there, same type of services, similar to what Boomers has?
We'll have some similar equipment and other services, such as wellness-type, like infrared sauna, which is very good for like fibromyalgia patients, for pain relief. So there's going to be a mix between fitness facility and some medical services that are in that portion of the gym. So to answer your question, kind of, but definitely not to the, you know, definitely away from. Most gyms, like Gold's or Jackson Sport and Fitness, or some, are going to have a lot of free weights and workout-type of equipment. We'll have some of that, but most of ours is going to be focused on more how to help a patient to gain fitness and wellness, and certainly be catered toward rehabilitation and have some services there that are unique to a medical rehabilitation facility to help patients in ways that I don't know that we currently have here in Jackson.
Okay. Well, the reason I was asked that question is for the council's purpose. I live near Boomers and back and forth when quality healthcare is closed, and they don't have a high volume of traffic there. It doesn't seem to be disturbing, you know, the neighborhood from what I was saying. If you're going to be much more similar to that than something else, which is what I picture.
Boomers doesn't have a house right behind it.
That's true. Well, it does, actually.
It's not, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments, counsel? This is an ordinance we have first reading, and before we get to...
I'd like to make a statement, Mayor.
Sure.
I have no problem with the clinic. I do have a problem with the gym, and I've asked my fellow council members to vote against this issue, please.
If, question, I guess, for Stan, if we vote no, does that mean it's a done deal? Or can he come back with different, you know, restriction on hours or?
Let's ask the city attorney to respond.
Oh, well, that's why I'm trying to figure out the table.
What you're doing is changing the ordinance to allow a different use. Use this describes is, it's primarily a medical clinic, and it will be used as a functional rehabilitation facility for patients. I don't think Mr. Dr. Bone could put out to the public, it's only for patients and it's only during clinic hours. And so the concerns you're addressing are contained by this. What I'm saying is, if he came and asked him, is it 24-hour open to public key access within that zone? I don't think it is. And that's a 30-second analysis, but what that says is it's for patients, primary medical clinic, and for, during clinic hours. So I don't think that's a 24/7 keyless entry by the public, that that helps. We're passing that, not approving his proposal. There's two-step process, that makes sense?
Yeah.
I guess I'm seeing the primary use is a medical clinic. That doesn't mean, the secondary use could be, the way I'm reading it, but I'm not an attorney, obviously.
Right, but it's got to be for patients, and it's got to be during clinic hours, as opposed to 24/7 keyless entry. That's all I'm saying, is that is much more restrictive than what I'm hearing him say, I might do this or might do that.
Well, here's my question, Louis, if it's during clinic hours, can he extend his clinic hours to 24-hour care?
I think what that means is, is during clinic hours, which you could have extended hours, but I don't think it's, I mean, I think we had to be staffed like a clinic. I don't think you could have a keyless entry or have a security guard, you know, watching TV inside. I mean, I think it has to be running as a clinic and not, I mean, you assume he's going to act in good faith. If the clinic's open 24 hours, you're going to have clinic traffic. So I, as I read that intent, it's not what is being discussed as an open-to-the-public keyless entry just for the gym part. It's got to be a patient associated with the clinic. Just, so what that says and what he's proposing to do, things, in my opinion.
Mayor.
Yes.
If we change this, we've got ozoneings going down north of there. We're going, those people know we did this, they're going to want changes in theirs. And we can't be hypocritical, we're going to be making changes all down through the zone, all the way to Northside High School. And he did make a statement that it could be open 24/7.
Okay, any other comments with counsel? We'll go ahead and, yeah, go ahead.
In respect to, and not to put anything against what Councilman Cisco said, but I would like to make a motion that this is tabled until some other information can be talked with, with Dr. Bone, and possibly come up with an alternative that is pleasing not only to him, but to this body.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second before we vote? We're going to have a public hearing, but is there a second to that?
Second.
Can we have a second by Councilman Knight? First, we can just call for a public hearing, and we'll declare the public hearing open, see if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. If you would make it known now, we'd be happy to call on you. If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion, a second. There's any additional discussion? Motion's to table.
So we're asking to send it back to the Planning Commission and let them come up with some additional restrictions or some more review of this?
Correct.
Bring back to us.
Okay. I think that's basically, yeah, what the motion states. Any discussion? Motion's to table. Counsel, please vote.
That motion passes with six members in favor and two against.
Okay. We have deleted item three, we'll go to item four under first reading, consideration of ordinance to close and abandon a section of Cumberland Street running between East Main Street and East Offense Street, submitted by Jackson Downtown Development Corporation.
You have in your packet the materials pertaining to this abandonment and closure, and this was presented to the Planning Commissioner at their last meeting, and they have recommended to you. Just to kind of familiarize you with the location, this is the alley that would run beside Bancorp South. Right now, their parking lot is accessed by the S. Greyhound bus station would be right here, and the church that burned would be right in this area. So that's the location, and again, the Planning Commission has recommended to you.
Okay, any questions of counsel to Stan?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We'll take a second. We'll also have the public hearing. This is an ordinance on first reading. I'll declare the public hearing open, see if there's anyone here who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Yes, ma'am, come up. If you would, just identify yourself for us for the record. Have a seat, have a seat.
Thompson Parks with Bancorp South, and we do approve this. We're in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in support of or in opposition? If not, then we'll declare the public hearing closed, and we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Counsel, please vote.
We're voting on, Mayor.
Okay, the motion passes with six members in favor, one against, and one up negative.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we'll go down to second reading, item eight. Consideration ordinance to rezone property located northwest corner of Pleasant Plains Road, McLemone Road from RS Single Family Residential District to RS One Single Family Residential District comprising 3.36 acres, more or less, submitted by McAlexander Engineering on behalf of NCG Partners. Counsel approve this on first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second?
Second.
Have a second. Discussion, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item two, under second reading, is consideration of ordinance to rezone property located on the south side of Ashport Road behind the Waterstone PRD, from RS One PRD Single Family Residential Plan Residential Development District to RS One Single Family Residential District comprising 9.73 acres, more or less, along with the revised preliminary development plan submitted by Jerry Winberry. Counsel has approved this on first reading.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And second. And discussion, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three, under second reading, is consideration of ordinance to close and abandon Hole Cove running west off Walker Road, just south of Brooksey Drive, submitted by Freeman Webb Company Realtors. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, counsel, please vote.
The motion is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Okay, thank you, Stan. That concludes the second readings. It doesn't leave there. Item four is consideration of ordinance for 2012, 2013 fiscal year operating capital budget. Second reading on the budget.
Morning, Mayor and counsel.
Morning.
We're here to approve the revised ordinance, and I will go through the changes, and they should be familiar with everyone. But before we do that, I'd like to call... But before we do that, I'd like to call on Keith Patterson. Councilwoman Foote and Councilman Wallace had several questions about our health costs, which are running seven to eight million, which would be like 12 and a half percent of the total budget. And specifically, Councilman Wallace asked, what if we looked at, instead of being self-insured, going to a plan with a Blue Cross Blue Shield or the state? And I think Keith is prepared to give answers and answer questions.
Good morning. What I did with this PowerPoint is, first of all, I want to point out kind of what your plan is at this point in time, so you have a better understanding of how the plan functions. Your current plan is partially self-funded, which means that the city is responsible for all the claims for every participant from zero to $185,000 and then above $185,000 the city is purchasing self-insurance or stop-loss insurance for those catastrophic claims. For a fee, Blue Cross Blue Shield Tennessee is paying claims on behalf of the city and you guys are paying them administration fee for that. And then you're also getting access to the network of providers that provides you with discounts for services that are received from medical providers. And Blue Cross bears no risk in this financial arrangement. Okay, does that make sense to everyone?
Okay. One question I've got, I guess, we've talked several times about, we've had some catastrophic illnesses that have cost our expenses to be a whole lot more, but that's just because it runs up from 185, it's not because we're paying two million or something for a heart disease plan, okay?
That's correct. The risk to the city stops at 185.
We've had ten or so that we had to pay $185,000 on per year and that's what's run our cost up so high last year.
And, and you will have a person, when the stop-loss carriers looking at your group and underwriting them, they'll say, well, we know this is a known risk and we project that person to have a higher specific deductible, which is what that $185,000 is considered specific deductible. And so if you have someone who has a catastrophic type cancer and they estimate, okay, the expenses for that person are gonna be $300,000 this year, they'll put a $300,000 deductible on that one individual. And we've had that from time to time on the plan. Last year, we had a laser, a higher deductible on an individual, but that individual did not have a large claim. This year, we initially didn't have a higher deductible on someone, but both of the reinsurance carriers who are bidding for your coverage this year have taken away that and everyone will have $185,000 deductible this year.
Okay, so they are selective on that to a small degree, but majority of them, just $185 for everybody and they may pick four or five people who know it's gonna be a problem.
Yes.
What's the, what are they paying for the reinsurance, do you?
About $230,000.
Okay, for the whole year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then the other question, I guess, that we had was comparing the cost that we've got now, we're paying 12% of our overall budget, the total overall cost for everything, would it possibly be less expensive, or have we looked at it possibly being less expensive if we just hired a insurance company to get health insurance just like everybody else does?
Nice segue, Mr. Wallace. So I went out and got quotes for you.
Okay.
Okay, and that's what's represented here. This is what you're gonna pay for 2012, 2013 for the cost of administration and the stop-loss reinsurance, based on the number of participants. You can see what I've highlighted there in red. The estimated annual cost for 2012, 2013 is gonna be about $6.9 million.
Okay, that's the thing, the plan we've got now.
Going for 2012, 2013, that's correct. Or if you terminate the plan, that plan doesn't just end, there are some run-out liabilities that you're gonna have to be responsible for, because if you go in and see a doctor today, that claim does not get processed by Blue Cross today, it takes a period of time. And the run-out liability, if you terminated your plan on December 31st and looking back, the run-out liability for the rest of the claims that have been processed by Blue Cross would have been about $589,000. So you would plug that on top of whatever you do from another plan cost standpoint. I asked Blue Cross for a fully insured quote. Their cost, when you consider the premium and the run-out, was gonna run about $8 million. 7.4 for the premiums and then the run-out liability, $589,000. Okay? I also looked at options from the state of Tennessee, the local government plan that you guys could participate in and the cost for each of the options that they have available to you, if you were in the best option, would be $8.1 million. If, if they look at your group and say, okay, because of these health issues, we're gonna charge you a higher premium, it could run as high as $10 million for the options that are available through the state. Plus you'd have to add in the run-out liability.
So basically, we're paying about a billion dollars less, even with the best-case scenario here with the way we're doing it now.
That's correct, yes. And you're participating in the claims experience, if their claims experience improves, then you don't spend those dollars and it remain in the balance sheet for the city.
The, the CDA $800,000 or $8 million plan you're looking at there, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, 8.1, is the, the coverage approximately the same?
It's a little richer plan for the partnership plan. Uh, that's a wellness plan that they mandate that the participants have to do certain things in order to qualify for those benefits. And so they price it a lower premium and employees, if they don't do all the different things that the state requires, then they're automatically shifted to the standard plan. They don't have access to partnership planning anymore. So there's, there's some restrictions to it. And it has a lower deductible than what your, your plan, the city's plan has and a lower out-of-pocket expense. So you'd expect to pay more premium for a plan like that.
Cut. Thank you, Keith, I appreciate your work.
Thanks, Keith. Any other questions? A few while he's figuring out a medical plan. Okay, thanks, babe.
The other question that I remember, and there may be more, and Councilman Brooks isn't here today, but he had questioned and rightly so, a very significant cost and risk that we're looking at, and that is the 2000, May of 2010 summary as to where we're at with expense and recovery. And I wanted to make sure that he understands and that the council understands, we have had recovery. We've had a total of $5,486 in expense and we've had recovery of $3,049, a million 184 from insurance, some very fortunately from T.DOT on road projects and then the large and small projects as classified by FEMA. So if this was the bottom of the ninth and the game ended here today, you know, we would be down $2 million, $2,400,000 from 5, 4 down to 3 million. That's not gonna happen. We have appealed $2.7 million in projects, the main ones being the Herring Grove Bridge, which we feel very confident on now that the mayor has gotten a change, I believe rightly so, Mayor, from T.DOT and that will support our case that it had to be rebuilt, not repaired. And we're working with FEMA to reopen the Omen Arena claim because so many things happened after the initial May 3rd that contributed to the costs that should have been included in the scope and for whatever reasons weren't. So that would give you a worst-case scenario. We do have some double payments where we received money from T.DOT and we also got some from the large and small projects. That would all have to be settled up along with our appeals. So it's very difficult to say exactly where we're at right now, but basically, this is what's on the books, so to speak. Any other questions? Okay, going back to what changed between the first and second readings, if you remember, the first item there is appropriation to other agencies and there was a request, I forget by which council person, but to go back and add in the agencies here of, let's see if we can get this across, RIFA, Faith Heal, Faith Health Center and Hub City Golf. So we added in about 15, 16,000 and then I had erroneously taken out 3.5% instead of the 3% that the mayor had instructed to go along with our other internal departments. So when I did that, it softened the blow and that brought us to 225, 378, which is what is shown as the new amount here. Then we corrected some key punch errors here on the IS services, so that's just an internal thing. And we took out the EDI grant with your approval because it really doesn't affect anything. Stan doesn't have plans right now to utilize those monies. And we took out a portion, well, the biggest portion, 95% of the T.DOT grant here, transportation grant for the bypass, southern bypass, and left in the 92,000 that he does plan to utilize this year. And then there were some adjustments on South Jackson benefits and extra duty benefits. So we had a total there of a net of $3,009,000 that we took out and we have revenues that we took out of about $3,007,000. So we had 250-some thousand dollars there increased.
Now, before you put that chart away, throw that chart back up there, the one in your hand?
Yes.
On the appropriation of other agencies, because there's one agency that got money last year that was not asking for this year.
There are, yeah.
And that, that was not in the original budget though, was it?
No.
Okay, okay, okay. So we're, we're actually overall...
Not though.
Down, but we're up nine from what we originally, okay, I'll wait you. Okay.
I just showed that because it had prior years.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so what is before us now, unless anyone else has any questions, is the revised ordinance, which by taking out the irrelevant material on those grants, really presents the picture that the mayor and I and Karen and Sam had tried to put together. And actually, it's a larger percent than the 3.5% or 3%. Basically because we don't have any appropriations to capital. As the mayor has said, there's no capital, no new monies, basically, except what was carryover from last year when we borrowed the $10 million for specific projects like the new fire station and road repair and Royal Street, et cetera. So because that million six is out of there that normally would have been in there, the actual reduction looks a little greater than the basic 3, 3.5% that we took out of the budget in, in general. So that's the revised ordinance that I'm presenting right now. Do we have a motion or if we have any other...
Any, any other questions in council as to content of the budget?
You know, we mentioned, or I think you mentioned, that you might move the expenses for the renovation of the suites at Prince Park to capital. Did you do that?
No, that's in this year.
In this year's, okay.
Right, this is FY13.
Okay.
But I am looking at that, yes.
You're looking at that, okay.
Any other, any other comments or questions before we...
Move the adoption of the operating capital budget.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the budget for this year's, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? This is second reading, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
All right, the next item before us is the ordinance to approve the property tax rate and basically there is no change. It's at $1.97. If you remember when I showed the pie charts from before, roughly 20% of every dollar is gonna go to the sinking fund, which is to pay off bonded indebtedness. It was up just a fraction from the previous year, but the rate stays the same, was just a little difference in the split. The previous year, we were at 19. something percent.
Okay, is there, is there a motion for approval of the, the tax rate for this next year?
So moved.
Have a motion, it's a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Now, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, the final item that, that I have, and I'll ask Kathleen Honeycutt to come up and assist me, and that's the amendment to Title VII regarding charges for garbage collection. And basically, the number that's easiest to relate to is the residential that would go up to 17.84. All of the commercial, which is various sized containers and how many times a week it's picked up and et cetera, those would also be raised the same percent. And if you realize, if you remember, basically I had gone through and I'll have Kathleen add comments to this, but basically, over the last three years, four years really, that we're talking about, we had incurred costs, or will have incurred by the end of this year, a million 523 and that's basically from rate increases and fuel surcharges. And Randy, Councilman Wallace, had asked a question and I think Kathleen can address this. We are trying to recover that million five, but we're also trying to look forward as to what we anticipate. You can see we've got a anticipated increase here on waste management in August. We're trying to recu, uh, go forward because we're not gonna have increases to the garbage rate each year. We try and make it every three or four years. So Kathleen, you might want to explain what all this covers, because it's not simply, as most people think, picking up the garbage twice a week and hauling it to the dump.
Exactly. And also, I might remind you that Allied Waste increases their cost to us every January and we have never, we have never passed that on to the public. In September of '11, my department is now responsible not only for the garbage collection, but for all of the debris collection on the sides of the road. That's any of your limbs or bulky waste, as well as the leaves that, that we are now collecting all year, as well as just during leaf season, which is when they start to fall. Also, the department, my department regularly maintains about 300 lots, pieces of property that we have inherited over the years, that we have to take care of every, every mowing season, as well as lots and pieces of property that the building department sends to us where they have tried to contact the owners to maintain their property and, and are continuing to get complaints. We go in, mow it and then attach a lean to the property. Last year, we mowed for, just for the building department, 229 lots, a minimum of one time, sometimes as many as four times, and we accrued leans in the amount of $212,000 that we attached to, to that property. So there's more than just garbage collection that goes along with, with our, with our department.
Two questions. We're not increasing the garbage rates to cover mowing lots, are we?
It, no, it all occurs towards the operation of the department, however.
But the, the garbage rates are to cover garbage pickup, the trash pickup, the lean pickup, all the services that residents get. The other question is, we're, we're adjusting the new rates for residential to cover residential costs and for commercial to cover commercial costs.
Exactly.
Neither one of those is supporting the other, are they? The way we're setting our rates up?
No.
Okay, so we're trying to, we're trying to, to set the rates to actually cover the actual cost of what we're doing.
Exactly.
Kathleen, where, where is the window on the cost of diesel fuel?
Once, once it...
I know the, the price of gasoline always has gone down and it's gonna bounce around, but diesel fuel, to my understanding, has not moved very much in what, two years?
Exactly. In the contract with Waste Management, once diesel reaches $2.71 per gallon, then they start passing the cost on to us. Just last month... Just last month, we paid twenty-six thousand dollars in fuel cost.
We don't have a savings component there, do we?
Not that I know.
Diesel drops to a dollar fifty a gallon, they give us some money back?
No.
We should, we should think about that.
We may have several birthdays before we... But, I mean, that's a good, yeah, I don't have a problem with it. But that is a major, a major cost. And I can see it just continuing to escalate as far as diesel fuel. Gasoline bounces around, but diesel fuel is consistently high and goes higher.
And there are times when, there have been times since we've been in this contract where we didn't pay anything, but very few.
Okay, any other, any other questions from council as to...
Well, as I said last month, my residents are not happy with waste management. Nothing to do with your department, Kathleen, but they don't want to pay more money for poor service.
Well, as I have always said, if there are complaints and if people don't feel like they're getting the service they're paying for, they can call my department. We have ways to make sure they are serviced properly.
Anyone else, council? Any comments or questions? If not, then you have before you the ordinance on solid waste removal. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any additional discussion? Council please vote.
And the motion passes with five members in favor and two against.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Item nine, under New Business, is consideration of the final approval of Jackson City charter revisions that were adopted as a private act by the Tennessee General Assembly. You all have copies of those revisions. They were exactly as council approved those and as to, as being put together by our hard-working committee that made those recommendations back to council.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Couple of observations and questions on the charter amendments with respect to the mayor's Salary Review Committee and the council's Salary Review Committee. Let me suggest that we do that as soon as possible so it won't become an election issue. Also, with respect to the salary of the city judge and the juvenile court clerk being equal to that of the Madison County Juvenile Court Clerk and the general sessions judge. For informational purposes, what are those salaries now?
Salaries are for the Madison County Journal Sessions Judge, Ellen Harvey, one forty-eight, three thirty.
Versus city judge?
One oh-six, five sixty-four.
Juvenile Court Clerk?
Seventy-two, two fourteen. Existing for city court clerk is fifty-two.
Were these two, under those sections, become active just this year?
After the next election.
After the next election?
For both of them.
Oh, my. I thought about running, okay.
That would be a violation of Tennessee code to change them in the midstream.
The same as the council and the mayor.
That's exactly right.
I don't, it's not worded that way.
Well, I know we're restricted by law.
If you look at it very carefully, it's not worded that way. And it could be active July one, this year.
And I'm sure the attorney general would have something to say about that.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not worded when in here, as it is the salary of the council and the mayor.
Liz, you mind, you mind expanding on that a little bit and knowing that we're subservient to state law in what we do locally?
I have to look at it first, but I do hope you can't change the salary during the term. My explanation is no better than yours.
Yeah, but it's not worded that way.
Would we approve it? Can we just make that a side motion that we don't adjust the salaries until...
Well...
Or do we even need to do that, I guess?
I'd be glad to look at it and closer to confirm this, but that is read in context with, it's actually the state constitution prohibits changing of an incumbent's salary during his term. You can only change to affect the next election. So even if we said it changes tomorrow, it wouldn't change until the next term. So everything is read in context.
So the salary for the position actually changes, but for whoever's holding it now, it doesn't change until they take office again or somebody else takes office again?
It's notice to the world, here's what this job is going to pay until that term expires. Now, there are cost of living increases that are adjustments, but the base salary itself cannot be changed during the term for any office.
I respectfully say that the annual cost of living is not authorized that way either. It's not worded that.
And I don't have that document in front of me, but...
Okay, any other, any other observations by council? This is a part of the, part of the process of getting our city charter where it needs to be. And basically, it's called ratification. And I'll remind the council, it takes two-thirds to ratify those charter revisions. So any other, any other questions that...
These are the exact revisions that we all approved previously. We just sent them up to the state to ratify and send them back down.
And they made, and they made no changes at the state level. They were approved exactly as they were submitted. Okay, is there a motion for approval to ratify the charter review revisions as sent back to us from the General Assembly?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion from council? Council please vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item two, under New Business, consideration of the 2012 JAG grant in partnership with Madison County. This does require a public hearing. And, Lamb, you want to just kind of see how we're going to be sharing the funding, if you would?
This is an equal, equal split between Jackson and Madison County. The funds total fifty-four thousand one hundred and forty dollars. It is not a match fund.
So no match will be required. I think this is a standard grant, which is afforded Jackson, Madison County. Before we vote, let me go ahead and open the public hearing as it relates to this grant and see if there's anyone here who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this particular grant. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item three is consideration of inter-local agreement for records and information management with Madison County Sheriff's Department. Anybody here who would like to tell us what that is? You probably have, I'm sure, the written information. Ms. Bale, I know you're chief, chief, is there? If there's any questions. Okay, okay. If there are any questions, we'll call them up. If not, I know you have the written information. So is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Council please vote.
And the motion passes with six members. The motion passes unanimously.
Triple Lakers. It's always hard.
Item four is acceptance of streets in Shepherdsville Section 16A, 16B, Moses Drive, Gideon Cove, Rahab Cove, Hacana Cove, and Joseph Cove. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, a second? Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item five is acceptance of streets and tradition Section two and three, Reflection Cove, Sweetwater Cove, Thornhill Cove, Arbuckle Lane, and a portion of Livingston Way. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Next item is acceptance of streets in Shiloh Springs, Section one, two, and three, Woodburne's Cove, Gateway Drive, Shiloh Springs, Waterdance Cove, and a portion of Zachary Lane. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, the council. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item seven is consideration of resolution approving a substantial amendment, number one, to the Annual Action Plan 2010, 2011.
Move the adoption.
I have a motion for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like a brief overview of what we're approving.
Sure. Anyone here from Housing Authority to go over that? Yeah, okay, Dave, if you would?
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Let me first say that the home funds are for housing only, unlike community development block grants. And there are several different regulatory and statutory rules that we have to adhere to. One of them is committing funds to actual projects within a two-year timeframe. And we've received a letter from HUD that we need to commit approximately three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to projects. The Target Rehab Program, we're having some difficulty with residents signing the required affordability period, which places a lien on the property. And those dollars are not being spent as fast as we would want. We do not have them committed to projects, not spent, but committed. And commitment means basically a contract with either a contractor, a sales agreement to acquire in order to allow us to commit those funds into the computer system. We have ample dollars in the Target Rehab Program that can still cover, should we get an influx of applications from residents. In order to get these committed to projects quickly, our CHODOs, Community Housing Development Organizations, there are two, Jona and Southwest CDC, are willing to work with us in getting these funds committed through an acquisition program. They are in need of, and what they want to do is buy up either vacant houses or houses that are for sale and rehab those and put them back into the marketplace. And so we want to move two hundred thousand from Target Rehab to the CHODO acquisition process.
Okay, any, any questions of council before we vote? Is there, is there a motion to...
We have a motion.
We already have, okay, all right. Any discussion? Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Item eight is board appointments. Jackson Energy Authority, reappointment of Mike McQuarter. I'll need a motion for that.
So moved.
And a second, thank you. Any discussion? Council please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
On the CEDC, the reappointment of Jane Alderson.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Council please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
On the Civil Service Commission, the reappointment of Melvin Hamlet.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Council please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
On the Keep Jackson Beautiful Commission, we have appointments of Ken McCorville, Tanell Roberts, and Brendan Nichols.
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Council please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
We also have the reappointments of Tammy Buchanan, Martha Coleman, Georgiana Wright, Abby Hinton, Dave Frostin, Karen Davenport, Pat Hamlet, and Sammy Britt.
So moved.
Have a motion for a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Discussion, so... Council please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
And on the tree board, the reappointment of David Mathis.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item nine is the budget amendments.
Two amendments today that are before you. The first one is amendments to the capital fund for central dispatch in the amount of fifty-eight thousand dollars. This was to complete the renovations to their building when they moved in back in February. The second one is an amendment to the police Bell South Building, one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. And this was to complete the renovations when they moved in July of last year. Total amendments total fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars that we will be moving into the capital fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Council please vote on that amendment.
Vote is unanimous.
The second amendment that you have before you is some year-end cleanup for some budgets that are going to have some overruns. This is for the street cleaning budget. Amendment request is one hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and forty, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand four forty-three sixty-three. The state street aid budget, two thirty-one, two twenty-three thirty-one. Moving part of this from the unanticipated expenses that we did not use, sixty-one thousand nine fifty-two oh nine. And then the Pringles Park budget in the amount of one twenty-six, three forty-three twenty-six. These are all in the general fund.
Okay, any, is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, a second?
What was the Pringles Park before?
The Pringles Park is for their operating budget for the overrun in the amount of one twenty-six, three forty-three point twenty-six.
Just overall operating, okay.
Moving into the operations budget.
Any additional questions? We have a motion on that.
We have a motion, we don't have a second.
Okay, how about a second, yeah? Okay, got a second. Any discussion? Council please vote.
Motion passes with five members in favor, one against.
Thank you.
Here, final item is the consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Somebody's going to have to make a motion. We have a motion and a second. Do we have a second?
No second yet.
Second.
Have a second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.